... I'm with the Joint Committee on Public Safety. In the light of the Constitution, we're going to take this place of the light.
Thank you for bringing us together here today. We ask that you continue to bless us, give us some wisdom and ability to carry out the duties of the Van Alstine City Council tonight. Help us keep open minds and awareness of everyone's thoughts and concerns and feelings. Father, we ask this in your Son Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor and integrity's side, I pledge allegiance to the Congress, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Consider taking the action necessary regarding approval of the minutes from April 9, 2019. Question, comments, or remarks? I'll say them. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Do we have two extensions?
Out of five, consider taking the action necessary regarding a request by the owner agent of property situated in the city of Van Alstine, County of Grayson, State of Texas, being described as McQuigay Edition Block 1, Lot 2, Acres 0.1208, more or less located at 448 Court Main, Hurricane 7, single-family residential district, minus 60, SF minus 60 for a variance to Van Alstine Code, Order 6626697D, to allow for a rear yard less than five feet from the lot line, an accessory structure located closer than 15 feet to the main building. Anybody who can speak on that?
I'm wishing to approve the...
Are there motions?
I'll say.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That concludes the Joint Committee on Public Safety. City Council, come to the order. We have any citizens communicating, which is for a general night here, or maybe some people wishing to speak on specific items?
Okay, we're going to deviate from the normal procedure and I have a little bit. We're going to really go into executive session, and part of that is, I just want you guys to stay here and hear all the good stuff that's going to happen later, but we're hopefully going to speak through executive session so that really we can have as much public input and comment that later on will be issued. So, just a little bit, we're going to go into executive session, pursuant to the following designated section of the Texas Government Code, page 551, the Council of Executive Section, adjusting all items, section 551.071, complication with attorney, contemplate litigation on a matter in which the duty of the attorney under the Texas Department of Rules and Product Conduct of the State Department of Labor Conflicts with the Texas Dopamine Act regarding, one, the metroway development, and, two, any and all items listed on the agenda for open session, section 551.072, pro property, regarding the purchase of property from municipal facilities and parks. It's now 6:37, we'll adjourn to executive session. This is Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month, and we have a proclamation here declaring our support for motorcycle safety and awareness, so, whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycles, considering their roads are our counties, and whereas motorcycles are roughly unprotected and vulnerable for motor injury or death, or tracks, and other vehicle drivers, and whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risk, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety, and whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways in this country, and it is the responsibility of riders and Motors alike to make all type of laws and safety rules, and whereas urging all citizens, by our community, to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle for riders and Motors alike to get beach knowledge of the mutual respect they deserve, and therefore I'd be proud of air, the city of Van Alstine, Texas, to hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month for the city. Further, I would call residents of this park to be safe and aware of our community. I'll sit my hand, call the CIL, it makes the booking they made, and we wish that right by us.
Okay, from a request from the city manager, I've put together a fund balance report for the months of October 1st through March 31st. I promise to make this short and sweet. You will notice that I've got graphs for each fund. The blue bar is our yearly budget, the total amounts for the year. The red bar is where our actual is for the six-month period, and the green bar is our six-month target, where we want to be. Just for a quick reference, for the revenues, you want the red bar higher than the green, and for the expenditures, you want the red bar lower than the green. For the general fund, we are doing really well for the six-month period, October through March 31st. Revenues were higher than budgeted and expenditures were lower than budgeted. The fund balance, as of March 31st, increased 596,000 since September 30th. September 30th was our fiscal year 2018 year end. This is just a breakdown of general fund revenues and expenditures. Total revenues were 2.4 million, expenditures 1.863 million, and then it shows our fund balance beginning, which was September 30th, in balance, and then where we are now. So, for this period, general fund is doing really well. Our water and sewer fund, our revenues are behind. That is because most of our water usage is during the summer months. I sent this over to Lynn, and his target has it evening out by the year end. Also, water and sewer impact fees are significantly behind. Moving forward, in fiscal year 2020, we will be breaking those out into their own accounts so they're not impacting the actual water and sewer fund, because those are restricted revenues and expenses that can't be used to balance the budget for water and sewer. And then it's a breakdown of the water fund revenues and expenditures and their fund balance. There is a decrease in the fund balance of 305,000. Court security and tech revenues were behind, but expenses were also less than budgeted, so overall, we still have a positive net position for the six-month period. The police seizure fund, we can only, police can only use the revenues received from seized assets once they are considered clear. For this six-month period, we did not have any cleared revenue. However, we did have a balance of about 16,000 in that account, so they were able to buy some equipment out of that account. Those expenses and revenues are not budgeted, that's why the graphs look a little skewed on this one. Our debt service fund, it collects and disperses taxes collected from an interest in sinking tax levy to pay for the tax-supported debt. In total, the debt service revenues are higher than what we had budgeted for this period, which is good. And the expenditures, it's only showing 6.85% expended, that's because the payments are due in June and September. So, by your hand, that will be ruled out. Capital projects, these are funded from debt proceeds. Some of, you'll notice, in some of the department's comments, there were capital projects that were approved in 2018, and while the funds were there for those projects and they were approved, it was not rolled forward in the budget for 2019, so it looks a little off. However, these projects were approved and the funds were there for them. We have two other funds, the enterprise fund and insurance fund. These funds are there for one expense only. Our enterprise fund is used to pay for interest payments only, and our insurance fund is used to pay for health insurance payments. Funds are transferred from other funds to cover these, so these two accounts are basically wash accounts. And I had met with the department directors and asked for comments and explanations on any significant variances in their budgets, and they supplied me with these. If you would like to read through them, I'm not going to read line item by line item. Most of the variances were due to timing. So, for example, the library, she had planned expenses that are going to occur at the end of this fiscal year, so it looks as if she's not used that budget where she will by year end. EMS revenues were down significantly for EMS, however, that includes the uncompensated care program, which is a lump sum that we will receive at the end of the year. The grants have done very well for EMS, and the capital expenses appear over budget, however, they had grant funding to cover some equipment that they received for training. Major repairs to police units were not covered under warranty. Moving forward in 2020, the budget will have to increase to accommodate the mature fleet that we have. Miscellaneous expenses included field drug testing, DWI blood tests, and drug testing supplies. Moving forward in 2020, there will be a new account specifically for field supplies. Court and communications, they're over budgeted overtime due to shortage of employees. And then here are the comments from water and sewer are coming up. As I said previously, the water sales per line are tracking below projection, but they are expected to even out by the year end. Overtime salaries is over because of excess caused by wells, power failure, lightning strikes, water leaks, frozen meters, and having to work weekends and holidays. Capitalized items, I guess I previously, appear to be over budget, but that was due to approved expenses not rolling forward to the 2019 budget. Sewer, maintenance and repairs of vehicles, such as the police, they are having to deal with an aging fleet, so a lot of these maintenance and repairs are not covered under warranty and were not budgeted for. That makes it up. You have any questions?
I think you think it was a general...
They were for specific items, yes.
I'm setting conductive public hearing regarding adoption of the City of Van Alstine Park of Resources Emergency Management Plan. This is the city's required state of water resource emergency management plan for five years. The previous plan was approved in 2014, adopted early 2015. The third of nature is hard to be said, the city's commission of the park is a faulty. Basically, that aligns what we do in our procedures in case of drought or superior water. I can be just fine reading all 56 pages if you care to hear it. It'll just be posted on the city board.
I'd like conductive public hearing regarding a request by the owner agent to replant property situated in the city of Van Alstine, Grayson County, Texas, being described as a replant lot 1 through lot 4 of subdivision 3, Division 11 of the original town of Van Alstine being 0.689 acres of land in the James McKinney survey abstract number 770, more commonly known as 212 North Sherman land. Is there anyone that can speak on that?
Conductive public hearing regarding the city's intent to purchase various properties known as College Edition Block 10, and College Edition Lot 10 and Lot 1 through 9, acre 1.3774, and Main Street Edition Lot 2, acre 0.086, and G-0770 McKinney, and James Ayers A, G-0770 acres 0.84, and G-0851 McKinney-Achley A, G-0851 acres 10, and G-0770 McKinney-James and Ayers A, G-0770 acres 1.6754, which will require the issuance of a combination tax and revenue certificate obligation amount of $1,205,000.
I do, and that was real easy for you to say, right?
Not so much.
Tonight, Mr. Mayor of Council, you're considering four properties for potential acquisition for city uses. I thought I would just touch on those four briefly. The first thing, a 10-acre site for the layman, it's located between Dallas and Kelly Street, and it's at the point where Umpus intersects with Dallas. It's a flat piece of land that is future park development. You have to be determined as to what that means, but it's intended use is for future park development. Purchase price is $39,000 an acre, or $390,000 total. The second piece of land being considered is 1.6754. All this is subject to survey, by the way. Acres of property, again for the layman, that's the parking lot directly in front of City Hall that many of these people are probably parked in tonight. Its intended purpose or intended use is a parking lot. Downtown Van Alstine needs to ensure its future with parking. Purchase price is $170,000. The next piece of property being considered is .926 acres, so just shy of one acre of property, on Main Street, generally known as Railcar Park. It is not a park, but it is Railcar Park. Its intended use is parking for downtown as we move forward. The last piece of property being considered is approximately 6.5 plus or minus acres of property, that is the former college in Van Alstine, former ISD headquarters, and I believe it was an elementary school at one point in time. Its intended use is for municipal development. Again, what that means is you have to be completely identified. The purchase price is $525,000.
Anybody who should speak, I know you're speaking. Have you one specific, did you want to speak now or wait until 20?
I wouldn't speak.
Okay.
Is going in front. First, I want to bring something to your kitchen. When I came in tonight, I had difficulty deciding where I wanted to speak on the agenda. I had to consult the mayor, and he had to consult the secretary, because the items 18, 20, 21, and 22 does not list specific locations or street descriptions, but 23, 25, and 26 do. And if all properties that were listed had street locations, and then even if they don't have an address, the general location, it would be so much easier for the president to tell where they were going to speak, and it makes it very consistent. I here tonight to ask council to consider not purchasing the breakback church property, hoping that it's not a done deal. I say that because this is the second item. The church property has been presented to the city for purchase. One wonders why this property has never been placed on the market for residential developers. There are no court cell signs posted on Dallas Street. This is in a residential section of Van Alstine. A high school is to be put, the new high school will be built west of 75. Also, this church has purchased property west of 75, and that's where they want to build. The city's not trying to purchase property west of 75. Why spend the money when they know developers are requiring to donate money or property to the city? But yet, you want to purchase property in a developed residential section of Salem. Was the park, I wonder if the park ward was consulted? Maybe I missed it on their agenda. And have you looked at the park plan? This is not a recommended location. For City Hall are a city park. There are three parks already at the south end of Salem, although one is a mini park. The city depends on volunteers to do along the park quarter. And you will remember, you haven't completed the work on North Park, McKinney-Wilson Park parking lot, which improved it near the street on the south side, and the property to the east of that park is now for sale and could be used to expand that park. And if I'm not mistaken, that property almost goes all the way to City Hall property, where the Department of Public Works is moving. If you look at Forest Moore Park, you know that the lights are left on like 89, and there's never enough parking at any sports park. I really think it's interesting that you are already improving the streets going to this property. You've opened up and improved all four streets that connect this property on Dallas Street to Highway 5. It's already started. I believe to develop this property into a park would appreciate the property values of the homes that are in that area. Think of the people you represent and ask yourself, is this the best way to spend taxpayer dollars? Sometimes a bargain is not always a bargain. Thank you very much for your time.
Anybody? I can do this.
I wanted to speak about the purchase of both the 10 acres out on Keller Lane and also about the six and a half acres over here at the college. My biggest issue with this is that we went through a cross survey, we had a master plan done up. Seventy-four percent of those surveyed have already told you that they find what we already have in our parks as substandard and poor. It means we don't have the money to care for what we already have. Yet we want to invest significant sums, go buy more land that we can't take care of, and I think Teddy Anna's already given you instances of what we can't maintain for right now. Vandalism is constant for us. Along with 74% saying what we have is poor quality, we also have them say that the majority of the funding should come from the developer fees, which is not what we're looking at today. Today, we're looking at expanding our debt and using our debt not for the services that we really need, which is we continue to drop millions of gallons of water down into our sewer systems because we have rates on stock in our water supply. I find I got mud out of my sink this week with the break up Houston Street. Our sewers, our roads, we constantly, for decades, have complained about these things, yet we're going to drop a million to on speculative land that we really have no purpose for buying. And with the park, we have another park of significant size that we already invested well over a million dollars into that park, and it's one we can't take care of, and it's only half a mile from another park that we want to buy. It reeks of being very speculative and doingness, and I really don't appreciate using my tax funds to buy property that we cannot take care of. I'm also very concerned with the property of our college paying twice the amount per acreage, and they're like only a mile or so apart. And I'm just like, where is the reason and this price that they're paying? And that is actually on our comprehensive plan as a multifamily, it should be tied to the city residential, and we want municipal services in there with poor roads, terrible infrastructure, so that's a lot of money we're going to have to pour into bringing that up to a level that honestly, the $39,000 an acre looks a lot better than paying $80,000 for a terrible piece of property with no access. So, I'd really like to ask that the city really consider thinking about spending $20,000 of our money when we don't have the basic necessities that we need. Thank you.
Anybody? We're moving, consider agenda, we're going to move out of 12 of the agenda, and... Consider agenda, we're going to remove items twelve of the agenda and District Attorney Allen's ten eleven thirteen through the seventh.
I'll make a motion if we approve items ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
I have a motion for a second. I'll second it. Any further discussion?
All in favor of your resolution? Three, four, opposed, you're going to say.
You're going to have a presentation here about the land purchases.
Good evening, mayor, council members, citizens. My name is Jim Sabels. I'm a managing director of the top series. I've been the manager advisor for a number of years in the city and helped it in a number of capacity, focusing on credit quality, capacity and customer management and property volatility, my special. I present Jim, can you begin with Mike? Over the last few months, we've done a lot of work in the absence of the staff. We presented, talking about the city's capacity to be as growing as. And today, I'm going to go through some of the key points that are relevant to this process. The key item that we're going to talk about is the next item on the agenda, which is the No-Set Tax Resolution. This item, No-Set Tax Resolution, actually, if passed by the council, the city secretary will publish through the paper record. Over the next few weeks, I know it's going to be a city tax issue, which is a lot of nation, one million, six hundred and forty-five thousand, only four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of debt to fund the purchase of land. Say, the planning engineer will not speculate, which is going to cost a ton of land. A lot of state that this plan will have no impact on the taxpayers, and we will explain that in detail. In summary, to give a little background, just as we use individuals kind of consider our current financial condition and our current life, we're tired of funding something. We spend a lot of time talking about the city's financial condition. The city's never been in a strong financial condition. Currently, our tax, taxable status value is two hundred and ninety-two million. Our bottom rating is A two, which is a medium investment grade rating, and it's provided by a third party. That's actually an independent review of our credit quality and medium investment rating. Very high with city bar population and tax value. So VW, I was writing all of the whole movies. These indicates that we have a strong financial condition. We have growing tax base, and to give you a feel on our tax base, over the last ten years, we've grown at an average annual growth rate of seven point three percent. For the last five years, about eight percent. Not only have we grown, but participation has been grown faster than before. The city's been well managed. We have a trend, a consistent trend of operating surpluses. Severally budgeting, maintaining expenses and conservatively estimating revenues allows us to have healthy operating surpluses. Those healthy operating surpluses allows healthy reserves to go forward, where the position to weather any financial storms. The key thing, and this is what we're talking about, is the city's debt position. And unique to Texas, we actually have bothered that outstanding. When you look at the average of that of the city, we have approximately three million dollars off. And based on our current value of two hundred and ninety-two million, it's about one percent of our value. If you look at movies category nationwide, cities our size, the credit quality, it would read about two point five percent. Not only are we way below the median for cities our size, when you look at that median, it really involves cities that are very mature and have built out, and cities that are broke, and vast majority of your peers that are broke, have skewed higher than two point five percent. It reflects their continued investment in infrastructure, amenities, things. And I think our low rating indicates the status of our process. So in our plan to fund this tonight, we will actually only direct for No-Set Tax. It will indicate on July ninth, the ordinance would be up agenda to issue the bonds through now and then. The city will actually enter into contracts, finalize those contracts, and then we will close this transaction on August seventh. The important thing about that is there is a complete action sale in both the state of Texas and this co-bond. Everything issued by this one is approved by the attorney general's appraisal department. We process that's very rare in the United States. All items related to the system are proceedings, contracts, actions taken, and the terms of the general. They will review and approve it, and they will provide proof, and that group will indicate to each and purchase our options. This is our good, appropriate process as a local, and that we have the capacity to pay that. Evidently, that's the reason why we say, may you tell us in the news, you see east coast or west coast or the whole city's having a financial problem. There's no record of a city in the last twenty, thirty, forty years defaulting in taxes because of our discretionary strategy process to issue that. Again, I must stress, today, we're in a healthy financial condition. We have tax yield outstanding as well, and a rapid amortization. The addition of this debt will not cause to increase our debt tax rate. In fact, we using no growth, we just have current values, we'll be able to keep this between our overall scenario. To give you a feel, we look at the last ten years, current by year, our overall tax rate is rose since back, and our tax debt compolged is rose by the entire time rate by almost fifty percent. So our current rate twelve point oh five would actually sort of. I will actually now go through a little more details about the program for the benefit of the council. I have a presentation asking to turn to page nineteen. This will actually estimate that much, the issue of one million four hundred and sixty-five thousand, purchase five, four properties and fund the planning, engineering, architecture, and large politicians. When we put the plan together, if you look at what our current values are, and look at, I think it's funny, you'll see, we actually have our current value of two hundred and ninety-two million, there is about three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of taxes based on our current tax rate. We want to be as conservative as possible, so our analysis indicates no growth in the current value and no increase in tax rate. If we look at our existing debt and pay that, and this amortized over twenty years, twenty years, it only will fit within the tax rate, the city will have considerable capacity going forward to fund other projects that's to go through. In summary, the interest rate, all value, the debt structure assumptions are all considered. We intend to do this as an competitive sale in July. There's been tremendous inflows of funds to this robust and a tremendous interest in high-grade Texas bond issue, which we structured heavily, process and mortgage rates. We use three point six for planning, but if we were actually sold in the market, we would have been about three point two five. So we built in a buffer for appearances. Again, council approves this once, city secretary will publish it in May twenty-fourth and May thirty-first. On July ninth, there would be a thing on the agenda for ordinance issuing the bonds. The interest rates would be set that morning to a competitive sale presented to the council approval. After the turn down, we review and approve it, expect the August seventh closing. Money would be deposited to the account of the city, and then, as appropriate, the city purchase properties and close on, and with balance available for questions, which will be available for design services for the parks. Again, in summary, it's a modest plan, it's affordable based on current resources, and it's considerably destructive, my expectation, when we're actually going to the sale in July, I would say, the interest rate is lower than anticipated, in fact, is less than anticipated. Again, I want to thank the staff in the council for input and challenge over the last few months to help the town and the citizens. This has been reviewed by both council and the city attorney, other professionals in industry, and they've all signed off to the assumptions and projections. That concludes my presentation. I want to ask any questions related to this.
I was considering taking the action necessary regarding adoption of a resolution of the city council in the city of Van Austin, Texas, directing publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation and resolving other matters related to this.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion for a second. I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor of your resolution right here? Out of twenty, discuss and consider an act on the real estate sales contract between the city of Van Austin and S six branches limited to purchase one point six seven five acres of property, generally described as G dash zero seven seven zero McKinney-James, Mayor's A, dash G zero seven seven zero, one point six seven four five acres as recorded in volume five, six, eight, four, page eight, seven, seven, D, Records, Grayson County, Texas.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve items number twenty-seven.
I have a motion for a second. I have a second. Further discussion? All in favor of your resolution? Out of twenty-three, discuss, consider an act on a real estate sales contract between the city of Van Austin and Van Austin Chamber of Commerce to purchase zero point nine two six acres of property, generally described as Main Street Edition Lot Two, zero point zero eight six acres, and G dash zero seven seven zero McKinney-James, Mayor's A, dash G zero seven seven zero, zero point eight four acres as recorded in volume thirty-nine, seventy-three, page ninety-two, docket number three one eight two five, D, Records, Grayson County, Texas.
I'll make a motion to approve items number twenty-seven.
I have a motion for a second. I have a second. Further discussion? All in favor of your resolution? Out of twenty-four, discuss, consider an act on a real estate sales contract between the city of Van Austin and Van Austin Independent School District to purchase six point five acres plus or minus of property described by Grayson County Appraisal District as Grayson County Appraisal District property ID one six eight zero three nine, legally described as College Edition Lot Ten, Lot One through Nine, and Grayson County Appraisal District property ID one six eight zero four zero, legally described as College Edition Lot Ten, well commonly known as six eighteen West Hay Denton Drive at Austin County, Texas.
I'd just like to make a comment on this property in particular. Obviously, the school, the ISD, the college beforehand, they have this piece of property the city has for, or it's been in the city and is associated with the ISD for a long, 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 long time. The master plan was originally developed in two thousand and three, around there approximately, the original master plan, that was called referred to as the for residents or single residents or whatever it was. That property has been sitting there, underbuilt, not used, it's available, it has the opportunity to be what's intended for, and to say that we entered into this lightly is incomplete and master understatement, because we took all of our due diligence and city standpoint and aligned it appraisal. We had communication with the ISD, we did our homework, and came to the conclusion that this was of best interest for the city of Van Austin in the sense of what that can be developed for, rather than just a rotten building that's sitting there owned by the ISD that this property. So that's my only say so on that. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of item number twenty-three.
I have a motion to approve the purchase is your second.
Second.
I have a motion for a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of your resolution? Out of twenty-four, everybody who wants to read the plan, I'm anxious to read all the most important pages. Unless you want to hear me read them.
I would make a motion to repass the ordinance, repealing ordinance number seven thirty-eight and adopting a lot of resource emergency bank management from the city of Van Austin. I have a motion for a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion for a second. Any further? All in favor of your resolution? agents to replant property situated in the city of Van Austin, Grayson County, Texas, being described as repatting Lot One through Lot Four, subdivision three, division eleven of the original account of Van Austin being zero point six eight nine acres of land in James McKinney survey, hashtag number seven seven zero, or commonly known as two point four Sherman Lane. I think the process is replant. Out of 25, consider taking the action necessary regarding requests by the owner agents to replant property situated in the City of Van Alstene, Grayson County, Texas, being described as repatting lot one through lot four subdivision three, division 11 of the original account of Van Alstene being 0.689 acres of land in the James McKinney survey extract number 770 more commonly known as 24 Sherman Lane. Think the prices to replant from one lot to four.
Yeah, we have somebody here to like speak on that behalf. I know that wasn't a public hearing or maybe it wasn't, but there's somebody here to speak on that. But let's know what they're intending, like they're just going to.
Is a single family, the request to replant will create a form, single family residential lot.
Did that, did it pass your planning, no?
Yes, it passed on the 24, it is going to be right on the 24.
Okay.
Based on the plan, the zoning commission is a recognition, have a motion to approve the review plan as requested.
I'll second.
Motion is taken, any discussion? All in favor of taking the motion right ahead? Out of 26. Consider take any action necessary regarding the zoning of Park Street 38, 1414 acre tract of land to change the zoning of the property for agricultural district A to planned development PD based on a request by the owner agents at Park and based zoning of commercial district office light retail and immigrant services C F1 is requested for 2.422 acres and based zoning of commercial district general C2 is requested for 3.687 acres. Residential zoning is proposed for 32.304 acres. The property is described as being a tract lands situated in the W. Blundell survey extract number 115 and the James McKinney survey extract number 770 of City of Van Alstene, Grayson County, being a part, been partly tract denied in Benton, Coleman, Delphine according to the deed recorded in document number 2009-00016366, D R record, Grayson County, Texas. The subject property is generally located in East of US 75 west of Keller Lane in the north of Catalina Road. Just call.
I'm going to let the gentleman speak first, he may answer the question.
Do we have anybody who can begin?
Sure, we're, I'm actually a field of fire engineering, 765 Mr. Roy Plano. We were last month to discuss this project and I believe the biggest concern was the commercial tract on Keller Lane. We had discussed, we had found some meeting minutes about the existing zoning on the property. I believe the city has downloaded and provided those to you in the packet, so we were just asking to move forward with the zoning case.
It originally been zoned and was changed in 2000.
I believe.
Six.
Six.
That wasn't common.
Did you all make any changes to the origines on or did you get the? It's the same as it was last month.
So what is the use of your 10 foot setback for your, for these homes because commercial, I understand everything is pretty much on commercial.
Sure, most of the houses without 20 foot setback, the reason for the 10 foot setback is because of the weird irregular shape of the tracks. Unfortunately, can't get the houses, the house on those tracks without a variance on that setback. I believe what we discussed with the planning and zoning commission is to reduce up to 25% of those 10 foot.
25%.
Somewhere in the ballpark.
Are they going to be in a certain section of this neighborhood?
They're kind of scattered, I mean, they're like the little subsanated little areas that you go on the cul-de-sacs.
Going the back door, they're 10 feet from their neighbor.
Most of them are actually going to be adjacent to the.
So what is your target customers or resident for this area?
It's hard to say, but in general, we're getting seeing these type of products, the lots are not either.
But there are two different areas.
Some could, that's still limits.
So you really don't know?
We don't know exactly what they would be. We're going to play them down toward which.
But you do know there's a need for a.
There will be enjoy us.
So the elements were living in this world.
Yes, sure.
The single family, how many builders?
That's up to builder, we don't have a builder at this time. I would assume that they most likely get probably three beds in a home, but can't guarantee that.
If single family, do we place?
Yes, or single family detached.
So the one with the 10 feet, are they going to have that, whether they're going to have green space or just be, I mean, this looks like.
I mean, we are, we discussed by, we discussed by that, again, the league has their loss in 2005, we discussed by the primary class.
And I was looking at my back patio, it's concrete, which is not.
Those builders being that eight foot deep path for this part of time and that's what we're trying to accomplish to make them all marketable.
And then how wide are the roads? I know you said it's four, but I don't know.
The widows are 50 foot, the roads are 31 foot.
Susan Crowell, 160 East Paris Street, I'd like to speak against this PD at this point. Overall, I'm really not opposed to it, but I think there is a P D, should be a lot more definition to this thing. There's too many issues about what is really going to look like, the 10 foot setback, I mean, that land is what that land is, it should be developed to fit to that land. It backs up against residential neighborhoods, I'm all for the higher density, if there's a better way, and actually, I don't know why you wouldn't make a higher density and not make them all detached. My problem with being detached is you have this small amount of space between the buildings that's going to attract trash and attract leaves. It's like you could make them actually, do like those townhomes, they'd be perfect for that area. I just would ask council to, to really ask the lawmen before coming up with this PD to say exactly, exactly, what is this going to look like? And then my other issue is for Keller Lane to have C1, what we heard last month was C1 because that was the lowest designation, which is not necessarily true, you could do with the neighborhood, I think it's NC is the lowest level of commercial, which is light retail for a residential neighborhood because where that's at, it's all residential. And if you see one that's a lot more expansive, I think is not really the right thing for that neighborhood, nor Keller Lane itself. So I would really ask council to ask the developer to come up with a lot more specific, you know, visuals and the actual good part to say exactly what this PD is going to look like because you're going to have Keller Lane and a whole neighborhood there, it's all established residential neighborhood. So to now provide that, that group foot out to furniture, you know, you're going to have a whole bunch of different traffic flow and you're wanting to bring out commercial neighborhood. So I really ask you to ask the lawmen of this PD before you agree.
This was approved by P and Z on 20.
Steve, you want to give us a chance to respond? Y'all respond? I just want to clarify, the zoning on that piece of property on Kelly is already of record and I believe the city can confirm its key being kept in our PD simply because we didn't want to go back to notice. So it's already zone commercial today.
No, it's not. I just asked the city, it's not, it was not fully codified, it was in the meeting minutes, but the city didn't follow through and get it codified, it is not C1.
What was the attorney's opinion on that?
Because it occurred a while back, I believe it was what, 2006? There's validation statutes that have now come into effect and even though it was a minute entry versus an ordinance, Texas legislature has held that those actions, because they haven't been contested within a certain amount of time, are now valid. And so that, that minute entry is valid for this particular ordinance.
So what are C1?
So it is, it is. It is commercial.
Really, you know. So there's really no point in even being our PD other than the notice has already gone out with it. So it's C1.
I do have one question that just popped up. So instead of trying to compact as many homes in this space and you still have quite a bit of future development in C1 on the west side, why didn't you just take a little bit more of that and put some more space in for the homes to be able to?
It wasn't a matter of, I mean, it's, like I said, it's due to irregular shapes, okay, you're going around corners, unfortunately, those big open spaces are thus pushing into that commercial track, there still wasn't enough room to get around the bins, the cul-de-sacs, the little pinch points. So, I mean, not all of them will be the full 10 feet, there's just maybe code in there that will be that full 10 feet. Some of them, I think, most of them are going to have like a 19 foot offer in the rear based on our primary class that we submitted.
If you guys provide access off of the access route 75 for all the construction truck.
Yes, that is our part of the construction plans, our construction interest will be up.
Is there any like purposeful green space in here or is it just where you couldn't build a house?
The green space is all planned in every area. We are hoping to do some magnetizing to, to an extent, our pitches, track ends, will go on trees.
There's 151 homes in, looks like this entire.
It is.
Residential area.
This is just ideas I was looking for, I mean, we're by 75, or low density housing, my own sentence, it's not ideal, we don't buy a car or a watch.
I understand that, interestingly, I mean, it's really the 10 foot setback, that kind of.
We are going to be as possible, I mean, I know it's not ideal and the builders, the builders have their different models and there's a chance they could, depending on building, they could increase those.
You have no idea the price point of the, or what it's going to be here, is it low income, is it going to be?
It's not going to be low income.
I mean, if it were, so the elderly, I wouldn't be doing much for it. So it seems like you've got a dependent plan for this area.
Not at this point, from a home building standpoint, I mean, what we're hoping, what we're doing is developing the property for the home builders and it's hoping in for the home builders to come in and market their homes to various different people. I was just mentioning that, I mean, that's just a one possibility, we could get a sink on this type of property.
But then the developer doesn't come back to the city, right? This is it?
The developer, I mean, the home builder.
They would still have to get buried, if there's anything outside of our current ordinance that they would have to get buried, is that, or they have to get buried?
All of the homes are being built in city ordinance, we are actually, should see.
It's done, you did it.
Right, so in the analysis, your basic foundation is, like that, and we have accommodated all of any future issues.
No, that was there for that meeting, I didn't sound that.
I'll make a motion to approve out of American State's.
Can I add, I don't know if you mind amending your motion? In looking at the.
Wait a seat.
I'm sorry?
I'll wait a seat.
A wait a seat? In looking at the ordinance that I see that's been added to the book, I don't know if Julie, the city attorney's comments have all been added in, I would ask that you approve it, if you're going to approve it, it's against council desire, approve it but subject to her final review, just to make sure her minor comments were added in. And if this comments, minor comments were to the exhibits.
Oh, they have a note on there? I have a question, maybe, no, just for state and staff comments that are not seen on the. It's not, I mean, that's a, for you to meet.
Subject to the approval of Julie Ford signing off on her final review. So I'll make a motion to approve it according to Julie Ford's final view of the notice she submitted. Make a motion.
Proving this today does not give any type of authority to change any other ordinances outside of this, this is just giving them the permission to, because they felt to go back to us, maybe pull the, all the tons of, correct?
That's correct.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor of taking the motion right ahead?
That's up to you.
It's up to you.
Yes, thank you. My vote is to approve the motion as stated by Captain Bailey. Out of 27, consider taking the action necessary regarding the appointment of Mayor Potem.
I would a motion to approve Robert Dafkett as Mayor of San Antonio.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor? Signify with raise your left hand. Out of 28.
Mr. Mayor and Council, our city audit is completed. They audited fiscal year 2018 and they prepared their preliminary report and provided it to my office. We're reviewing that report right now, we're given the opportunity to provide comments for inclusion in the audit and that is being done at this time. As discussed in the April city council meeting, the Economic Development Corporation of County has now migrated to city hall for using the assist system. The migration from QuickBooks to Assist went very smoothly and if we have any issues, we'll resolve them as they come up. The city engineer, working with the city manager, submitted three projects for grant consideration under the 2019 transportation alternatives and safe routes to school, Project Gattacall. Project one is an extension of the shared use path from North Park South to Waco, turning west on Van Alstene Parkway and ending at Highway 75. Project two would connect the shared use path at Van Alstene Parkway, excuse me, project two would connect the shared use path at the high school, continuing the project south on Waco to North Park to the residential area south of that park. Project three provides a shared use path from Georgetown to Forest Moore Park. 400 projects have been submitted, the text out for consideration. We are hoping to have one or two projects given further consideration and I have just received a text call, a text dot phone call to have a phone conference this Friday to review those project submissions, so it's looking favorable. That's all I have tonight. That's all I have tonight.
That's it, thank everyone for coming out, your opinions do matter, if it didn't go your way, you do take it with consideration.
Yeah, just thank you everyone for coming out, you know, change for Provia and you know, to Austin's...
She called.
Yeah, we have to congratulate her, we congratulate her for getting the opportunity and doing what we need to do, sort of this fine city, and so we just thank you for all of our employees, city employees, volunteers, and I just want to say a special thank you to Wayne, Wayne does so much work to do with his due diligence on all of these projects, all of these things that come to the council, he does not take lightly, he understands that, hey, we're, we're running, whether we like it or not, so part of the process of the day was so that we have to say so in that, and that, you know, I think our good friend Lee's on here today and says, you know, hey, I think we need more land, so if we get an opportunity to get some, let's do it, because we'd rather be enjoying what this, you know, citizens, 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 enjoying what the city looks like rather than developers and builders and all of that, so just want to say thank you to Wayne, his staff, because they do a phenomenal job, and then to all of our public servants as well, thank you, and for all the reports that you let came out with, thank you.
Just reiterating that, I'm just, I feel like I'm just, oh wow, I was only gone one time, I feel like I've been here six months, it's kind of very strange, but I do want to thank everybody for coming out, and I know it takes a little bit of your energy from your families, that's, that's ours, but we do appreciate it, and just be kind to one another.
As always, I'd like to thank all of our volunteers on all of our boards that are here, all of them whether they're here or not, also thank all of our small business owners who are most valued and part of our community, thank everyone who serves our boards, and also thank you to the city staff, engineer, everyone. Also, I have a couple of announcements, in the morning at eight o'clock here at City Hall, we have a chamber breakfast, everyone is welcome to attend, hosted by New Taco, which the food is great, and it's from eight to nine a.m. Saturday, we have our Chamber Banquet, first one since two thousand and eleven, starts at six thirty until ten o'clock, Grayson College, it's a casino night theme, there are going to be some special recognition awards also, that are well deserved in a long time time, so if you would like tickets, come see the Chamber office. And let's see, the library, they're having a blast off, summer reading blast off, from eleven a.m. to one thirty p.m., the date's not on here, I tried to text her to get the date, I'm assuming that it was...
May eighteenth, eleven to twelve thirty.
May eighteenth, yeah, that's, that is, yeah, this, she said it will be face painting, face painting, a liminal artist, many horses, and for all the kids that sign up for summer reading, please come. We had one zoning variance, we may have to have P and Z look at probably to have a, this meeting, whether our ordinance is maybe deficient, or if we just have a unique situation, something, we might work, but we didn't, it may just be a unique situation, we might want to just look at our ordinance and just hope what... Sure, one more announcement, Chamber is also having Music Inn Park, that coincides with the farmer's market, the real park, the Music Inn Park is there for the builder in the Decebo, that is the third two, third state, in the evening, and Mary Jenkins are...
I have none of them, Casey Baker, she's on, she's on radio charts now.
No, Casey Baker will be our... Well, thank y'all for being safe for the whole, we can't keep our, what we did tonight, I like having the big reception, so we have more people here to chat, and it is really true, it is important to be here all the time, we rely on the advice of council and the things that you think about, but we don't all leave, sometimes we're biopic, we need everybody's opinion, and I'm the third group, so thank you all, and with that, we will just take it back.